The December 19th, 2023 meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. Item three is public comment. We allot 21 minutes, up to 21 minutes for public comment, and up to three minutes per speaker. And our practice is to go back and forth between those who are signed up in order on the sheet here in person and then the people who wish to participate from the online version. So why don't we go first to the, go ahead first to the in-person attendees? And if you could state your name and your address and what we're going to do, I'm going to get my timer going because we have to be, according to the law, pretty consistent about how we apply the time limits. So I'm going to go ahead and get ready. Mr. Milano will time the 21 minutes. I'll time the three minutes. And I'll give you the high sign and may just give you an acknowledgement when we're at about 2 minutes and 30 seconds.
All right.
All right. So go ahead.
All right. Eric Kokinson, 583 Elliott Street. First, I'd like to thank everyone here for the opportunity to speak tonight. And an even bigger thank you to the boards, committees, town staff, and town meeting members that were involved in the recent town meeting. I'm not a town meeting member, but I'm very appreciative of the work that goes into running our town. At that town meeting, members overwhelmingly voted yes on Article One, the multifamily zoning necessary to comply with state law by the end of the year. Some now seek to unravel two years of public process and redo the vote in a special town meeting for all registered voters. This is a right afforded by the town charter, though it hasn't been done in five decades, and it requires only a small minority to do so. I don't believe that such a vote is a productive use of our town's resources because we elect town meeting members to make these decisions, and they voted yes on the zoning. However, if there is a vote, a no vote would have serious consequences for our town. Financial, legal, and reputational ramifications for which there would be no quick fix because state law will prevent us from voting on substantially similar zoning for two years. Allow me to be more clear. Though many opponents of the article say they want just a little more time and will bring an article to the next town meeting, a no vote would prevent the town from doing so. Further, the planning board has no agreement on a path towards zoning that is complying with the law, a law that Milton must follow. In having followed their efforts over the past 18 months, I'm concerned that any progress will be made. The more prudent choice is to enact the zoning that town meeting said yes to and make any necessary amendments at future town meetings, including for an increased percentage of affordable units. The Department of Planning and Community Development hosted countless public forums and information sessions leading up to town meeting, including one specifically for town meeting members. These are all recorded and on the town website, but I would strongly encourage that the Select Board and Town Staff engage the entire electorate with information and host another public forum if there is to be another vote. This is not to say that non-town meeting members are not engaged in the process. I know because I am one, but I think it would be a mistake to assume that everyone is sufficiently engaged and informed. This is an incredibly complex bylaw and a great deal of misinformation persists. I know that many people over the next few weeks will not want to think about zoning while they're enjoying time with family and friends, but I hope that in the new year, there will be an opportunity
That's 2 minutes and 30 seconds, Mr. Kokinson.
For the general public to fully understand the details and nuances of the zoning and not just the penalties that will be avoided by voting yes, but also the many benefits that Milton will enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
2:45?
2:44. So not the best we've had, but very good, very good. All right. Next, we have a hand up for the online participants. Ada Rose Marin. So if you could promote Ms. Rose Marin. See if she promoted. Ms. Rose Marin, are you there?
There we go. Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear?
We can hear you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Ada Rose Marin, 32 Columbine Road. After one and a half years of study and careful planning, followed by five hours of debate and a resounding vote of two-thirds of town meeting, I was disappointed to learn that folks who oppose the approved MBTA zoning article are working to overturn this decision. As you know, if this zoning plan is not approved by December 31st, Milton will be noncompliant with state law. I implore the Select Board to do its best to educate voters about the reasons for, requirements of, and the impacts of noncompliance with this state law. We don't get to pick and choose which laws we follow. Milton is an integral part of the greater Boston region, and we need to do our share to address the housing crisis and the region's history of exclusionary zoning. Some have minimized the cost of noncompliance to the town of Milton. I was driving home recently when I heard Governor Healey on the radio warning cities and towns against disregarding the MBTA Communities Act. She has doubled the number of state funding sources that will be withheld from noncompliant communities. She also specifically cited funding for schools, roads, and bridges. That got my attention. As a former school committee member and chair, I can tell you that Milton would be devastated by a loss of its state education funds, including $11.6 million for Chapter 70, $2.5 million for the Circuit Breaker Fund, $500,000 for Medicaid reimbursement, and $200,000 for miscellaneous education grants. Of course, as a community on the brink of building a new school, $30 million in possible funding from the Mass School Building Authority for a new school building is at stake. Other state funds for roads, libraries, pilot funds for the Blue Hills, general government, and more are also in jeopardy. Milton cannot and should not jeopardize our state funding by being noncompliant with the MBTA Communities Act. On the other side of the balance sheet, the RKG fiscal impact analysis from Milton's MBTA zoning plan showed up to $1 million additional tax dollars for a full build-out of the proposed zoning. These funds would be important to helping Milton address challenges in our town coffers.
That's 2 minutes and 30 seconds, Ms. Rose Marin?
Thank you. The proposed zoning is good for Milton and includes us in a statewide solution to the housing crisis. Is it perfect? Maybe not. Can the town work to improve the plan while remaining compliant with the law? Yes. The plan gives Milton control over its own future rather than ceding control to developers or court-ordered zoning. We can do better than this. As the Boston Globe states, what is at stake is no less than the future of our region.
Thank you, Ms. Rose Marin. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go next in person. If we have, I think we have another person in person. So you're a person in person. And if you could come up and state your name and address. And you'll have 30, 3 minutes, 30 minutes. You'll have 3 minutes, and I'll let you know at 2 minutes and 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Zadie Rose. I live at 9 Oak Road, and I'm here to speak about the MBTA community zoning. Thank you to the Select Board, the Planning Board for their 18-month process in creating Articles 1 and 2, the Warrant Committee, Town Staff, and anyone else involved in creating these articles. I'm a town meeting in Precinct 2 in an area that's directly affected by this zoning, and I voted to pass these articles for several reasons. One, first and foremost, to stay in compliance with state law. Two, with the understanding that once the articles pass, the plans can be changed. Three, if we don't pass these articles, the state can sue us or worse, do the zoning for us. Zoning is planning, not building. Change will be gradual, and we can continue to work together to make it successful. Town meeting members voted in overwhelming support of Articles 1 and 2. We spent a lot of time reading and listening to information about these articles. I urged Town Staff to host information sessions so that the public can make an informed decision. I know there's misinformation circulating about these articles, and if there is going to be a single ballot question, I'd hope the public, I hope that the public would have the opportunity to make an informed vote. Either we decide locally or the state will decide for us. Why should we risk the plan of noncompliance to overturn the vote when people can work on improving it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. That one was competitive with one of the best of the year. A minute and 24. So do we, do we have anyone else online? I don't see any hands up right now. If you're interested in taking 3 minutes of Citizen Speak, please indicate by raising your hand. Nick, how is it that, I see it wants some, someone on, by phone. How is it that they do it by phone? Is it star six? I don't remember what it is. We just got to make sure that the person
Share that in a moment.
Yeah, just, we want to make sure the person by phone, if they want to speak, knows how to put their hand up.
Star nine.
Star nine. So if anyone on, by phone, if you want to put your hand up for Citizen Speak, it's star nine. So let's give people a minute to do that. And see if we have anyone further for Citizen Speak. I don't see any, so we'll give it just one more minute. Anyone for Citizen Speak online, just put your hand up. If you're on, if you're on the phone, star nine. All right, I don't see anyone online. I don't see anyone else here. So that, that's all we have for Citizen Speak or public comment tonight. Item four is discussion update approval designed for the intersection project at Squanum Street and Adams Street. And this is a contract amendment with Beta Group. And I think we have Chase Berkeley, our Director of the Department of Public Works. And I think we have someone from Beta Group that we need to promote, Mr. Roy. Is that right?
Correct, yes.
Anyone else?
That's it.
Okay.
Glad to be here. Yeah, thank you for having me. Yeah, we've been busy, yeah.
Yeah.
All the credit goes to the crew, too. They've been phenomenal.
How's everything going? Are we pretty good shape?
We're in good shape, yeah. Rough 48 hours there, but we're looking good right now, yeah. Just about, they expect just about 99% of electricity to be back tonight, so.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Yep, so I'll just tee it off for Chris if that's all right.
Yeah, has he been promoted?
Yes, he's there now.
Mr. Roy, I think you're, you're, you're able to participate and speak. So Chase is going to kick it off, but please jump in.
Yeah, he's going to have just a couple of quick slides, too.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so thank you, Chase Berkeley, Director of Public Works. So I'm here tonight to give a project update and request some approval for continuation of the design of the new traffic lights at Squanum and Adams Street. So just two weeks ago tonight, Mass DOT held what they call the 25% Design Public Hearing where they present the 25% design concept in a public forum. Anyone's allowed to attend. Information about the product is given, and then question and answer happens at the end of that. And if they can't answer it on the fly, they will get back to the, whoever asked the questions in writing following that. So if Chris could be put up to share his screen, he's just going to present what that 25% design was briefly and then talk about the next steps to get us to construction.
And Chris, can I be able to share your screen right now?
Sure. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, I'm clear.
Great. Just let me know if you can see my screen.
We can.
Okay, so you can see the PowerPoint, right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you, Chase. Once again, my name is Chris Roy from Beta Group, and I just want to give you the update on this project. This project was initiated back in, I'm just going to give you a little bit of history first on the project. It was initiated back in 2019, and then we submitted a 25% design in the fall of 2020. And you'll see a gap here between, until our next milestone. During this timeframe, during the review, the environmental review, it was determined that the property on the northwest corner of Adams and Squanum Street was a historic property. As such, we were asked to evaluate other options to minimize the impact to this property. So we developed three new alternatives, and along with the original design, presented these four options to the Milton Traffic Commission last winter and followed that up with a public information meeting. Based on the feedback from that public information meeting, the town selected a preferred alternative, and we submitted a revised 25% design this past summer. And then that led to the Design Public Hearing, which, as Chase mentioned, was held a couple of weeks ago. So this is a plan of the project. Adams Street is the east-west roadway. Squanum Street comes in from the north. The project limits, the western project limit is just west of Pillen Road. The eastern project limit is just west of Brook Road, which Brook Road comes into Adams Street right down here. And the northerly limit is just past Augusta Road along Squanum Street. We are proposing a traffic signal at the intersection of Adams Street and Squanum Street, providing dedicated turn lanes on each approach, reconstructing the sidewalks and pedestrian curb ramps, as can be shown in this beige color, and implementing buffered bicycle lanes on each side of the road as well as reconfiguring, reconstructing the median islands. And also, Rose Street will be closed off to help improve traffic operations. So as Chase mentioned, we're entering the final design stage, and we're proposing a final design amendment. And that will include a 75% submittal that we will submit to MassDOT. It's all part of their submittal process. And that'll consist of completing the design, providing environmental documents, and preparing right-of-way plans. Then we will submit 100% submittal and then a PSNE submittal, which is a final plan specs and estimate submittal. And as far as timeline goes, we will submit the, we plan to submit the 75% in this, this spring, spring of 2024. In the fall of 2024, 100% submission. Winter of 2025 will be that final PSNE submission as well as advertising the project for construction. And then in the spring of 2025, we will be, begin construction. Are there any questions?
Chase, do you have anything further before we go to the members?
No, that's fine. We can open it up, yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I just would like to add one thing. And this project would be, and Chase can correct me on the funding mechanism, but the town is paying for the design here, and Mass DOT, the state will pick up the actual construction costs. So assuming this continues to go forward, it ultimately will be paid for by Mass DOT in large part.
Comments or questions from the members? And I can't see because of the presentation. I don't think Mr. Zoll. So if you can keep an eye out for whether
He has raised his hand.
He has raised his hand. All right, so why don't we go first to Mr. Zoll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Nick, for looking out for my hand. And thank you, Mr. Roy. And my hat is off to the DPW. I saw them very hard at work with our wood chipper yesterday morning, early, and they've done a tremendous job. Mr. Roy, I'm just wondering if you could say a little bit, because I know that we sort of casually mentioned that Rose Street is closed off, but if you could talk a little bit about the engagement of the neighbors there because I believe they've been directly involved. And then the second question that I have, too, is what do we expect the effects of this will be on the light that's at Brook and Adams? Because I know many of our Milton neighbors will have been hung up at that light, you know, for sometimes multiple cycles. And I'm just wondering if there's been a look at what the flow into that light and then sort of into the East Milton area will look like once this light is up? Thank you very much.
So yes, so to answer your first question, yes, that the public information meeting was attended, was very heavily attended by Rose Street residents and who are all, or pretty much all for the closure of the roadway. And to answer the, and that was the public information meeting we had last winter. And then as far as the second part of your question, the how it would affect Brook Road. As part of the design, we are coordinating the intersection of Adams and Squanum Street with Adams and Brook Road, and they will be coordinated or talking to each other so that traffic operations will be improved through that, through that area.
If I could just add, Mr. Chair, just keep in mind, too, we'll be constructing a new fire station within the project limits here, too. And we've incorporated the fire station plans as part of this project. So it's not exactly clear who will get there first, but it doesn't really matter. We'll each build for that future condition.
Let me just follow up on that, Chase, because that was one question I had, which is, let's say, you know, we're going to finish Central Station in January. Let's say East Milton, the East Milton Station starts in July of '24. So that'll be roughly a year before this happens. Does that present any problems if we, if we have the, if we have the East Milton Station start in the summer of '24?
Yeah, it really shouldn't. So part of the land acquisition required the new driveway for the school to be constructed, which we've done over this past summer. So the new driveway is in place, so the existing driveway that St. Agathus was using can be closed down and not impact the school flow of traffic at all, so they can take over the site, start the fire station construction. If it happens to be simultaneous with the Mass DOT project, there'll be some coordination required. But each project knows which the other project needs to build to be completed, so.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Musto?
Thank you. With regards to the project, this last meeting, was it heavily attended? And what other comments came up from residents? I understand this was from the winter meeting about Rose Street, but I'm wondering if there was anything else that came up at this meeting I was unable to attend. And when you're doing, looking at this intersection, how far away are you looking at in terms of maybe traffic studies and things like that?
So to answer the first question, so the meeting was pretty well attended. I think there were over 30 members of the public there. The, the main focus of the questions surrounded land acquisition that's necessary because the Adams Street needs to be widened to accommodate the new turning lanes and the bike lanes and the sidewalk construction. So there's a few properties on the north end of the Adams Street that will require permanent takings. So those homeowners naturally had some, you know, very specific questions about their properties. And we've been working with them specifically and individually to help show them what it will look like in their own yards. As far as traffic analytics, Beta did look at the surrounding area. So again, this, this project won't change the volume of traffic that goes through the intersection in any direction. It'll just organize it better so that people can move through it better. So the anticipation is that traffic flow will improve. But I'll let Chris, you know, add on to that because Beta did do some specific analysis.
Yeah, we did, as I mentioned, we did look at the Brook Road, Milton, excuse me, the Adams Street-Brook Road intersection. And there were other, other intersections, we took a look at, adjacent intersections. But as Chase mentioned, there's no additional traffic that will, that will be created as a result of this project, and it will just help traffic operations through the intersection.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Does Mr. Zoll have his hand up? Chase, how many properties, if you know, will be affected by the permanent takings?
I believe there's three permanent takings. And then there's more than that on the temporary easement side. So MassDOT's process requires the taking of temporary easements, and homeowners are actually compensated for those temporary easements. So there's more of those, and then the permanent takings. Chris, there's not anything else that I missed, right? There's just the three?
Actually, there's, there are a few. There's four permanent takings on the north side of Adams, and then on the east side of Squanum, there are a couple of takings. I'm sorry, permanent easements for the, on that side. Temporary easements, there are about 27 temporary easements. And there are a few, two utility easements for the relocation of utility poles or the relocation of a guy wire for the utility poles.
So, so we have four permanent takings on the north side, two permanent easements on the east side, and then several temporary easements. And the temporary easements are just for the time of construction, right?
Correct, yeah. And we'll be back to your body with those takings when it comes time with the final right-of-way plans that will go through the town's process for that.
And we've been in touch with all of the, all of the owners of those parcels, or we have a plan to?
Yeah, so that'll be, I can be starting now, yeah.
Okay, okay. And that'll be, that'll be your department or?
It will. Yeah, we'll have assistance with Beta, but the DPW Engineering Department will drive that.
Ms. Musto?
Just a final question with that. When you're talking about the takings, what size land amount are you taking? What would be the largest amount on one of the properties? You know, are we talking a couple inches? Are we probably talking a couple feet? You know, just have an idea.
I think, I think, Mr. Roy, that's to you.
Yeah, I mean, I could speak specifically to Adams Street. So that is kind of like, if you think of a diagonal line through the front yards. So it varies in width across them, but there are some cases where it's, you know, five to seven feet in from the existing back of sidewalk. So the Adams Street is a historic street, and there's stone walls on those properties. So those stone walls will actually be removed and then replaced in the new spot on their, on their front yard. So to preserve that historic look and feel of the frontage.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions? All right, so we have a approval of a contract amendment. Is that what, is that what we're, you're here for tonight ultimately?
In addition, yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Bradley.
Thank you. I'd like to move to approve the contract amendment with Beta Group, Inc. for the intersection project at Squanum Street and Adams Street.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. And this will be a roll call vote as we have someone participating remotely. So all who's in favor, Mr., first go to our remote participant, Mr. Zoll.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
And Mr. Zoll, yes. Thank you, Chase.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. And 7:30, not bad.
Thank you for that, yeah. Have a good night.
Have a great night, Chase. Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, and if we could, Mr. Roy, you might want to take down your, there we go. All right, now we're back. All right, thank you, Mr. Roy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Item five is discussion approval warrant for the 2024 Annual Town Meeting and warrant closing date. Didn't we just finish a town meeting? Mr. Milano?
Sorry to be the very bad news to start thinking about the annual town meeting. The first Monday in May will be May 6th, 2024. The town election will be the week before that, April 30th. The, in order to get all the warrant articles, I'd suggest that the Select Board schedule that the warrant will close on Wednesday, January 17th at 5:00 p.m., at which point we can assemble the warrant articles, share them with the Warrant Committee, and then have them ready for the Select Board's meeting on January 23rd, that following week, to improve them for inclusion in the warrant. And then that would just get the process rolling. I have already alerted the department heads and some boards and committees that we are seeking the warrant articles for the annual and to get them as soon as possible. The sooner the better for all of us, ourselves and the Warrant Committee. So just reminding everybody that now is the time and hope to see some articles.
And we have, yes, and we have some carryovers from our last town meeting. So that will, I guess, be the start of it. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Milano, can you repeat your tentative beginning parts of this? Did you say that the first night of town meeting would be May 6th?
That's the first Monday, yeah.
Okay, and then what? You went back from there?
The town election is the Tuesday before that.
Okay. My daughter turns 21 on May 6th, so maybe we bring champagne for all of town meeting. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Other comments or questions? Other comments or questions? It's Mr. Zoll, I don't see him on here, so can we just make sure he doesn't have anything? All right, so do we want to go ahead and, to approve those dates as laid out by Mr. Milano?
Are those the only two dates that we're approving in the January date?
The, the select board would be, should be approving the warrant closing deadline, and the date I recommended is January 17 at 5:00 p.m.
I'll make a motion, if it's okay?
Yeah, please.
So, I'm sorry, I should have asked first.
No, 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 no.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant closing date of Wednesday, January 17, 2024, for the annual town meeting scheduled for May 6, 2024.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? It's going to be a roll call vote, because we are remote, we have one remote person, Mr. Zoll.
The remote person says yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. All right, item six, discussion update, Select Board Finance Committee report. Ms. Bradley.
Yes. Sorry, I'm just writing that all out in my antiquated book. Okay, the Select Board Subcommittee Finance Committee has been meeting the last few weeks with the School Committee, Fin, Subcommittee Finance Committee, to talk about where we're kind of at for the end of this year, the beginning of next year, what the budgets are looking like. And a couple weeks ago, we had asked Mr. Milano to kind of go over what the scenarios might be. We had that meeting on Monday, and at this point, we're still waiting for some hard numbers. As most of you know, we don't get numbers until January from the governor, and then it's, you know, after that, it's the House, so. So at this point, you know, we're kind of just still going over all of our options for 2025. I will say that it's, it's definitely tight. I mean, I think that this is something that the Finance Committee talked about last year. We have a lot of funding for, from ARPA, we have a lot of funding for other things, and I think, you know, this, this is going to be an extremely tight year, so just so folks are aware of that and, and starting to prepare for that possibility of just, we don't, we're not really sure about what that looks like, but, but there's definitely going to be a tightness. So, Mr. Milano, did I miss anything?
No, I think that's, that's right, we'll have a fresh update in January, and we'll go from there.
Perfect, thanks so much.
Comments or questions from the members? Again, you'll keep an eye, keep an eye out for Mr. Zoll, because I can't see him on the screen here.
I can't see him either.
Well, it's the same screen, so. Comments, comments or questions on the budget? I don't think we have any action to take here, we'll just, we'll just follow up on that in our meeting, next meeting in January. Item seven, this is a, a discussion approval of a, of a Class II dealer license.
Correct, Mr. Chair, this license was renewed last year, and the applicant is looking for renewal of the motor vehicle dealer license, so secondhand vehicle sales.
I'll move to approve the 2024 Class II dealer license renewal for RBM Motor Masters Incorporated, DBA Milton Auto Repair located at 944 Canton Avenue, Milton, Mass.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All, this is going to be a, a roll call vote. Our remote person, Mr. Zoll.
Mr. Zoll says yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. Item eight, discussion approval, board and committee appointments. Item 8A is the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee reappointments.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Bradley.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Victoria Shea and George Tagayas to the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee for a term to expire on June 30, 2024.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All is in favor, Mr. Zoll.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Item 8B, reappointment to the Community Preservation Committee.
I'll move to reappoint Peter Jackson to the Community Preservation Committee for a three-year term.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All is in favor, Mr. Zoll.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Item 8C, Equity and Justice for All Advisory Committee Appointment.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to appoint Jane, I want to say that's Ogata, is that right?
Ogata.
Ogata, thank you, to the Equity and Justice for All Advisory Committee for a term to expire on June 30, 2024.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all is in favor, any further discussion? All is in favor, Mr. Zoll.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Item 8D, Master Plan Implementation Committee reappointments.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to, to appoint, I just lost it, okay, to reappoint the following individuals to the Master Plan Implementation for a term to expire on June 30, 2024, Richard Burke, Taylor Kelly, and Warren Lizzo.
I'll second, but I wanted to add something.
Yes, motion's been made and seconded, and discussion, Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I believe that this is a joint appointment, so do we say that this is who we're going to vote for, and then we send it to the planning board, right?
I believe that's right.
For Mr. Lizio.
Oh, for Mr. Lizio.
Right.
So, so maybe we?
Oh, for, not for all of them, if it's a reappointment, or just only a new person?
You know what, I thought it was just the new folks or joint appointments, I didn't double check that. Either way, it won't be effective until the planning board.
Okay, so just pending that, I would, I would do it pending, yeah.
So I'll offer a friendly?
We have to appoint them, and then they would have to confirm that, or deny it, and then if they deny it, they would come back to us.
Sure.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll make a friendly amendment saying, subject to the approval of the planning board, if necessary.
Sure.
All right, it's been, it's been accepted by the, by the, by the movement and by the second.
I have another discussion.
Ms. Bradley.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to remind folks, as I do every meeting, and I know I sound like a, somebody banging a drum, but a lot of folks talked to me during my campaign and said that they really wanted to make sure that there was a process where they could apply to be on boards and committees that was a little bit more open, and so Ms. Musto and I actually completed that last year, and, and so I'm just going to put out the call again, for anybody listening or any friends, as folks get together this, the next few weeks, if anybody is a Milton resident and is encouraged to apply to be on a board and committee, I would greatly appreciate that, because I think it's wonderful when we have all of our neighbors represented, so that's my pitch.
Great, thank you, Ms. Bradley. Bang the drum, bang the drum, bang.
I'm banging the drum.
Bang the Drum Slowly was a great movie in the 1970s, a baseball movie, Bang the Drum Slowly, Robert De Niro, and great baseball movie. Anyway, sorry to, sorry to digress, very good movie. All right, so motion's been made and seconded, it's also Warren Lizio, I think, is the pronunciation, I think it's just for the pronunciation.
Did I say Lizzo?
I think so, but anyway. Motion's been made and seconded, all is in favor, any further discussion? All is in favor, Mr. Zoll.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. Item nine, appointment of election poll workers.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint the individuals, do you want me to name them off?
I think you can say, as noted on the agenda.
As noted on the agenda, in accordance with MGL Chapter 54, Section 12, for a term of one year.
I will second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, Mr. Zoll.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. Item 10, discussion approval of meeting minutes. We have minutes from November 2, November 3, November 17, November 21, and November 22.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended meeting minutes for November 2, November 3, November 17, November 21, November 22, all in 2023.
I think there might be a?
Is there another member?
No, no, I think that, I wonder if we do have the third, because, do we have the third or not?
Right, do you notice that that's not?
Yeah, I don't think we have the third, I don't think we have the third, so, so if you want to amend your motion to the 2nd, the 17th, the 21st, and the 27th?
My apologies.
No, it's not your call, it was on me.
I was just trying to combine some things, so yeah, I'd like to amend it just to be the 2nd, 17th, 21, 22 of 2023.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Yep.
Seeing none, all is in favor, Mr. Zoll.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Item 11, Town Administrator's Report, Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chase was here already, but a big thanks to his crew and all the DPW employees, police officers, firefighters, who had one or two calls over the past couple of days. I shared an announcement from the Blue Hills Observatory that this was the most, the highest win they had gotten in some 30 years, so it certainly had an impact, and if anybody had traveled down to Canton and Adams to take a look at the damage down there, that was one tree that took down five telephone poles, and I was driving out to check out what was going on there, looked like they were setting the fifth and final pole, so hopefully that will reopen. This evening, they did get Rendell Avenue been for this morning, which was good, down in that neck of the woods. Town engineer Marina Fernandez, who's been with the town for a few years, has provided her notice, and she'll be moving on to a new opportunity with the town of Brookline, so we're sad to see her go, but certainly wish her the very best in a upward mobility in engineering, and especially in the town, engineering and transportation world, Brookline has a lot to offer, so we wish her the best. Thanks just to everybody for their work on the town meeting, a lot goes into it behind the scenes, especially from Lynn in our office, and the town clerk staff, Amy Dexter, Joanne McCarthy, who helped volunteer and hand out clickers to everybody, so I appreciate all that. Thanks to the warrant committee for helping another smooth warrant report process, and I didn't hear any typos or complaints, so I think we'll, we'll take that as another victory. And just lastly, just in terms of, I just wanted to thank Tim and Josh and Julie in the planning department for their work over the past 18 months, 24 months, on the MBTA communities issue. There's certainly been a lot of back and forth over it, but I think we can all say that they poured a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of hours into the work product, and Tim was certainly caught in an interesting position with two boards with two different perspectives on it, I think he handled it admirably, and I just wanted to just personally thank him for his work over the, that past 24 months, all the department heads who, you know, are dedicated to their town and, to their work in this town, and give a lot to the town, so just wanted to take that note, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Item 12 is the Chair's report, the only thing I'll, I'll acknowledge is the Super Bowl celebration that we had in this town a week ago Sunday, and it was a great event that was put together by Jen Caputo Renz and her husband, husband Jen Renz, whose, whose son is one of the tight ends on the team, and it was a great event celebrating the, the team, the cheerleaders, the band, and, you know, I will repeat my personal thanks to the Milton Football Wildcats, because in 1981, when I was on the Brockton High football team, we had a 13 to 12 lead at the half, and after the snowstorm fell, at halftime, we ended up losing 24-13 in 1981 to Walpole, so it was nice to see the Milton team avenge in some way the loss that Brockton and, and that I suffered back in 1981. So thank you to the Milton Wildcats, thank you for, for all who turned out to that celebration a week ago Sunday. Item 3, oh, Ms. Musto.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to add two other things that happened on that Friday night, there was the Rotary had an event over here with the tree lighting that was very nice, and then on the morning of the football celebration, there was a bench dedication in memory of Catherine Todd, that was very nice as well.
That's right, that's right, thank you for that, thank you for reminding us of that. All right, item 13, public comment response, you have anything? And you're watching Mr. Zoll, if he puts his hand up. And Ms. Musto.
I do want to thank people that came to speak tonight. I did want to clarify something that was said, there was a mention of the 30 million from the School Building Authority, and I'm wondering if Mr. Milano can clarify that. My understanding is that money, that there was an application put in for funding for a new school, but it was denied, so I just want to hear about that, is that true? Because this was mentioned tonight, so I just wanted to make sure that we had that clarified.
Yes, the town of Milton applied to the MSBA earlier this year, and we received notification from the School Building Authority last week that the Milton's application was unsuccessful, and they had offered their opportunities to a bunch of other school districts, so that is, in terms of this year's application, that is correct. Their letter with the denial did note that the statement of interest process opens back up in the new year, and applications would be due in April of '24 if towns are interested in reapplying.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else on public comment response? Seeing none, item 14, future meeting dates, we have the, the dates of January 9 and January 23, but we, we have a petition under Section 7 of our charter, and so we may have to schedule, we will likely have to schedule, a special town meeting, it's called a special town meeting, and it's an election at a special town meeting, and so we have from Monday, 14 days under our charter, this board has 14 days to call that election day, that election. 14 days from yesterday would take us up to January 1, so it seems to me we need to meet next week sometime to call the election, or set the date for that special town meeting, where people, if, if, if all proceeds as we expect it to, where we'll have that, we'll have the election, a vote at that special town meeting, so it seems to me we need to add a meeting next week, so what do we think about, it, it should be a short meeting?
Would it be Zoom?
Could be Zoom, absolutely, we could have a Zoom meeting, just to set the date, we'll, we'll prob, we'll hear from the town clerk, I expect we'll hear from the town clerk, town council, this is a procedure, as someone pointed out earlier, hasn't been done in 50 years, so I'm sure we'll hear from town clerk, town council, town administrator about that, but, but that would be the only item on the agenda, and I wouldn't imagine it would take very long to do that, so yeah, it certainly can be by Zoom, and I, let's, let's, let's all agree that it will be by Zoom. So we could do it, if we want to keep to our, our normal Tuesday night schedules, we could do it on the 26th, I suppose, or we could do it later in the week, if we want, I mean?
Will you send out a few potential?
We can do that, yeah, we can do that, if we want to, yeah, Mr. Milano will poll everyone, so we'll try to do it for some, some day or night next week.
And that was going to be my question, are we looking at nights, or are we looking at possible daytime turn?
You know, either, I think, I think it's?
Just give us a few options.
Yeah, yeah, why don't we do that? Mr. Zoll, do you have anything, any input on the, on that?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with Nick sending around some dates, just keeping in mind, of course, that we'll have the, we'll have to post the agenda, so we'll have to make sure that the dates that we're looking at, we can still post for, when we're, after we've closed the ballot, as it were.
That's right, so we'll have to, today's Tuesday, so we'll probably have to decide by Thursday, by Thursday, so, so we should be able to get it, and it's, it's, I, I think it's particularly important, as you point out, Ms. Musto, to do that, because Mr. Wells isn't here, so we can get his input as well, so, okay, so that's what we'll do on, on that, and then the other two dates we have are the existing dates of January 9 and January 23, so, any else on those? Mr. Zoll, anything else on those? All right?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll, so I think, so are, are both executive sessions of moment?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll make a motion to, to have, enter into two executive sessions, not to return to open session, I believe.
Correct.
Okay, not to return to open session, okay.
Not to.
All right, so I will move to enter into exec, to executive session, discuss litigation strategy, strategy with respect to litigation filed by the town of Milton versus the Federal Aviation Administration, number 22-152, U.S. Court of Appeals, First Circuit, based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have detrimental effect on the litigating possession of the Select Board, the Select Board will not return to open session, this will be a roll call vote. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all is in favor, Mr. Zoll.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. I also move to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, bargaining regarding Milton Firefighters Local 1116, based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the Select Board, the Select Board will not return to open session, do I have a second?